I've got one minute, go ahead and do it.
It's all burnt out.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Gardner City Council will come to order if you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in whose hands we're on, nation under our indivisible liberty and justice for all.
The first item tonight is a presentation from the Madeline Herman Memorial Fund and this is a pretty neat thing and so what I would like is if everybody here from the Gardner Gold team, if you all would mind coming up and joining me with an example of folks, Jeff, come on up and... Right up here, everybody up here. David, how you doing, bud? Wonderful? Okay.
All right, I guess we can balance out.
Balance out, yes. Okay, um, well first, if you'd like to talk about the memorial fund and all that, those of you who know, this is the Gardner Gold team, an outstanding program, an outstanding group of athletes we have in town, but if you wouldn't mind, go ahead.
Well, my name is Shara Herman and this is my husband Sonny. This is our son Dakota and our daughter Erin and I'm wearing a picture of our youngest daughter Madeline. She was eight years old and she passed away on Memorial Day from a seizure disorder that she had and she also participated in the Special Olympics and so in her honor, we wanted to do something for Gardner Gold because they provided so much for us during her life. She was a cheerleader, she played soccer and she also played softball and those opportunities that she had in her life just blessed us so much. Sonny, why don't you go ahead and get...
Well, it's just a great thing for parents of children with special needs especially. Just for them to be normal kids, have fun, enjoy doing sports like everyone else, dancing was their thing. She was a student in life and really was a great kid. One of the things that we did was the chili luncheon, which I can't go on and say much more about some of our friends that are here tonight, the Fels family helped us so much with the chili luncheon that we actually had in daylight part of our day and then that same night, we had a dance and just raised fifteen hundred dollars through that event, those two events and then my employer matched that same fifteen hundred dollars that we have raised. They also contributed to the fifteen hundred.
That's marvelous.
That's actually what we have for you today.
Oh, this is tremendous. Thank you so very much.
Yes, and we had a great time doing it too.
This is awesome.
I want to thank the community who's cannot support us, has been very helpful throughout the whole process.
Yeah, we had a lot of fun and we definitely really appreciate the community's effort and the teachers and the parenting selves.
Wow, well, this is absolutely tremendous. Our Gardner Gold program is something that we're very proud of. I know our athletes excel in all of the events and that's a tremendous thing. I know Jason couldn't be here tonight, so Jeff is going to stand in for him. I know he wanted to be, but...
He did. We'll have to call upon the B team tonight. Jason is at home with a sick child this evening. He's frets not being able to be here, but this group is a very special group to us and has done some great things along with all of its parents, the volunteers that it takes to run such a program. This check for three thousand dollars, I might add, is the largest donation since the program first was put together. It will truly go a long way for our athletes and our volunteers. The program itself is funded only by donations and fundraising efforts. It's not supported by the City General Fund per se, so a lot of great efforts put forth to make good quality programs for our athletes here and I can't say how much this donation means to all of them, the volunteers that are part of this program, so greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
This is a marvelous thing. I had the privilege of growing up with an older brother who had downs and it's, you know, we've gotten much better and we've had some tremendous events here in Gardner and I think folks sometimes don't realize the blessings that we get from that companionship and it's a wonderful thing. I know here we did the Jelly Bean Conspiracy and Corinne and Cameron were a couple of stars for sure and it was a really neat, it was a really neat play that was put on at our high school and it told us and it was real. It was very much a true thing of the wonderfulness and the challenges that we have and sometimes the frustrations, but this is great and we will use it well, I know, and looking forward to an outstanding spring season and then on to the fall and many more... Yeah, that's right, that's right. All right, you guys, anything to say? No? No? Wonderful, well, thank you. Thank you also very much. This is a great thing in memory of Madeline and it's marvelous. Thank you.
One just, it was a lot. We appreciate it all, man.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Okay, our next presentation is actually a, an appointment to the City Council to fill the vacancy created with Dennis Pugh's resignation. Following the resignation, I had received letters of interest from seven people within the community. I had the opportunity and the pleasure to meet with all seven and we had some very good folks step forward. As a result of the, as a result of the interviews and discussions, I recommend that we appoint Heath Freeman to fill that role. I spoke with Heath and he accepted. The appointment must occur with my recommendation and concurrence of a majority of the council. So with that, I would entertain a motion to appoint Heath Freeman to the remaining term of Councilman Dennis Pugh's term.
I move we approve the appointment of Heath Freeman for Dennis Pugh's remaining term.
Second.
Motion, Broxman, second Harrison, that we appoint Heath Freeman to the Gardner City Council. All those in favor?
Wait, point of order, Mayor?
Yes.
Can we ask him some questions as long as...
Absolutely.
Pretty big decision we have before us.
Absolutely. Heath, if you wouldn't mind coming forward.
Hello.
How are you?
Anxious, excited, nervous, all the above.
So you hadn't run for any office. What made you interested in this office?
Well, timing played a big part. I did consider running during the past election, but a couple of things I thought might change in our lives didn't quite come to play, so timing as this opened up made it a little bit more of an opportunity for me and just based on some of the things that I think I might be able to bring and some of what I see as needs, I think I'd be a good fit in that regard.
So what needs do you seek?
Yeah, absolutely. I think within that seat, the most critical aspects are someone that can step in and be an open-minded, critical thinker, but also come in with creative problem-solving skills to understand that all the issues are going to have side A and side B, but there has to be a side that is the best for the citizens of Gardner and that's where I think we need to move forward, is always with the citizen's best interests at heart and I think that's where I'll be able to fit really well in.
So what was the nature of your involvement in the recall committee?
Well, I was definitely someone that participated in the recall efforts and helped with some of the organization. I helped put some of those pieces together, even went out to so far as to request signatures to get the petition brought forward and spoke with some individuals, so was not an official member of the committee, was put forward and, but definitely played a hand in all of this.
And what motivated you to go from voter on that issue to activist?
Actually, it was that issue that brought to light. This is something that I've, you know, grown up being part of. I've always been someone that had a great deal of civic pride and take a great deal of pride and this is the thing Dave and I first spoke about is the thing that drives me to want to say here is I'm very, very proud to be from Gardner and very proud that my family and I decided to live here and make a home here and once kind of being open to that piece of puzzle, thought there might be some places where I could fit and make a difference.
And since you're an open-minded, critical thinker...
Yeah, absolutely.
What, and certainly you read the district attorney's opinion as to whether they violated the law or not and what was your conclusion?
Well, at the end of the day, you have to look at the district attorney's, their stance on it. They didn't violate. I still think in my mind and mind that the way they went about and what their order of business was that day was not dealt with with the best interest of, as soon as the whole, I thought it was a power play and that's why I acted when the, that drove me to my stance. It wasn't any, I didn't know any of it from Adam beforehand, so when the actions came to play, that's where I fit in.
But you agree that they did not violate the law?
I agree that the DA found that they did not violate any laws and that his findings were not perceived with any sort of, any sort of official findings on such.
Well, I mean, he did officially find that they did not violate the law, right?
Absolutely, and that's, yeah.
Okay, and you agree with that?
I agree exactly with what the DA said there. I have to agree with his findings because that's the final ruling.
Right, do you agree that they violated the law or not?
Is that...
I think that's, you know, we can argue back and forth, we're both on two different sides of the issue, so and again, there's both sides too. I have stated my case and what I thought it was and you've stated yours and we know exactly where you fell into it and to go back and forth, we're not going to get the same answer. I agree that the DA found that they didn't violate any laws, but I think there's alliances where people can be found and not violate anything, but that doesn't mean that it was a hundred percent right on both sides. So I don't think you're going to get the answer you want from me, but that's my answer to it. I can definitely agree with you that the DA didn't find any laws broken in the subject, but that's where it stands.
And so how did you go out and sell that to other people?
Statement of fact.
Which was?
What I felt were all the pieces that came together. I mean, I guess, how long do you want to go through this? Conversation will go back and forth all week, maybe we go through this part.
You started with the statement that you're a critical thinker and you're open-minded.
Absolutely.
And, you know, when a district attorney who's got a law degree says these people did not violate the law...
Sure.
Yeah, I don't know how you go out and get signatures under that intent. So I'm just, I guess I'm trying to figure out, how do you sell somebody to sign up?
I guess, well, I'll answer frankly. I mean, this is, this is something that's done and it was done and it went along and it moved forward, so I guess we can harp on that. We can talk a long time about how my involvement was. I felt strongly about it, you felt strongly about the issues that you ran a campaign on, you felt strongly about the issues of staying firm with the council and saying they didn't know anyone in answer, but we all have different aspects and my opinion was that they did and I argued on that.
So now that you know that there are two violations of the Kansas Open Meetings Act...
Absolutely.
Are you inclined to pursue those, the same avenues?
Yeah, no, no, because first of all, I don't think, and I'll say what the difference was. I don't think the most recent violations were any sort of grab for power. They weren't a play to bring anything more to the table than what was done. Also, it would be an attack on everyone in the council because everyone sat within those meetings where the violations took place. Regardless of whether they objected or not, in the meetings where the DA had their findings, all five individuals were sitting at the table. So then it'd be a call on the entire action.
Well, you could only recall two though, right?
Uh, is it two or was it three? Is it two because you can't unseat them and destroy the council? Absolutely.
So you could recall two and you, assuming that, you know, this time there is an actual violation, you could do that.
Absolutely, yeah. If someone wanted to put together the campaign, the way I understood laws going through the first time, now if there has been an actual violation filed with the DA, they can move forward with that and they wouldn't have very much trouble through the legal side of that, having a recall petition ordered and then be able to put it forward and have it verified.
But you're not inclined to do that?
No, no, not.
And what's the difference?
I explained that before. I don't think it was a fundamental power grab by anyone to try to underhand what anyone's particular power was on the council. Nothing like that.
Do you have any additional questions? You've asked us five different ways and he's given you answers to each five times. I think we can move on from that to another question, please.
Yeah, the next question is, tell me about your relationship with Gardner Bank.
My father-in-law, James Kornell, is...
Senior Vice President.
There you go, Senior Vice President. That's the relationship with Gardner Bank. My son does have a savings account there, I will mention that. And my wife and I have a separate savings account, but we don't do our business check, or not business, I don't own a business, we don't do our personal checking or anything else. So there's where my relationship is.
And can you remain impartial, do you think, with that kind of a tie to the bank? I mean, they do have property that they would like to develop and development is frequently what we talk about here.
Well, when I sit here, all I can say to you is that absolutely, that's the truth. And I mean, you can choose to believe that or not, but I don't think anything that would come to the table would have either my own or Jim's or anyone else's job on the line where my vote would be swayed one way or the other. Again, I think that seat has to be filled by someone that's always got Gardner's best interests at heart. That's where I would side with that.
And would you be willing to abstain from voting?
If that's the best move, absolutely, I think so. I mean, if something literally comes together and says this job is going to result in someone unrelating, I think that anyone on the council might be put in the same position. I don't know if anyone else has relatives within businesses around town that swing votes. If abstaining from the vote is the best way to move forward, then I think that's probably a logical way to go.
Mayor, I think we can also ask you the same question, being a Realtor, you have stakes in development throughout the town. Would you be willing to abstain if anything came into play for that?
I don't have any stakes in any developments in town.
You're a Realtor, but, and so that directly ties to your living.
Of course.
So if you, would you be willing to abstain if that were to happen?
I've already demonstrated that I will vote against my own best interests when I decline to vote for the improvements to, that the school district wants.
Heath hasn't even been voted on yet and you're already in trying to impugn his character. I think you should give him a little chance to see what he's going to do.
Well, I think actually it's a fair question to ask.
I think it's fair. I think I answered fairly as well, absolutely.
That's, that's, I mean, he did answer very well, so as long as you're willing to, I assume you're also willing to vote against the interests of Gardner Bank if necessary?
Absolutely, if that's the best move. I mean, I know that you'll have to take my word for it and at the end of the day, that's all it comes back on, but literally, there's no other reason for me to be involved here if it wasn't for the best interest of Gardner and the citizens. And if that's protecting them through a vote one way or the other, that's where I think my best bet's going to be.
Okay. Any other questions from other council members?
No.
There is a motion on the floor. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Heath, if you could come up and Doreen will administer the oath.
Rashida, can you repeat after me?
Yes.
I.D. Freeman, do you spell the name square?
I.D. Freeman, it's all in the square.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas?
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties?
And faithfully discharge the duties.
As a council member for the City of Gardner, Kansas?
As a council member for the City of Gardner, Kansas. So there we go.
And Doreen will touch base as well as Melissa gets you a handbook, information, a little bit of orientation. Unfortunately, the league will not have formal orientation till about the second week in May, give or take, so, but we'll, it's a Saturday in Topeka. Exciting stuff.
Absolutely.
So wonderful. Well, thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Appreciate that and appreciate everyone who stepped up. It's a challenging position, it is a huge time commitment and we welcome Heath. With that, we will move to public comment. There is time allotted for anyone who wishes to speak on city matters or items that are on the agenda that are not part of a public hearing. We will hold a public hearing later this evening on business item number three. So if you have anything, please come forward to the deck, to the podium, name and address.
Hello, my name is Debbie Hickman and my address is 848 South Sumac. I have to admit that I have been one of those citizens that haven't come to many meetings. Finally, August 1st, I attended my first meeting, had read lots of things about what was going on with City Council, decided it was time I come, get involved. You can't moan if you aren't involved, so I wanted to do that. At my first meeting, after the meeting, I introduced myself to Mr. Fotovich and I asked you a question, some questions about your vote that night and you were going to email me. August 1st, 2011, January 17th, 2012, have never heard anything from you whatsoever. I kind of hesitate, you know, you could have fired off a million letters between now and then to the newspaper, letters to the editors, if someone hadn't given you the information you asked for, another council member, the mayor, or the city. So I really would like to at least be acknowledged with a question that you promised me the answers to in August.
Where are those questions?
You know what? This is my three minutes. I'm done, thanks.
And, and, thank you. If you would, Debbie, if you would email to Mr. Fotovich and I'm sure he'll respond. Anyone else? Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a council member who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
Motion, Morrow, second, Broxman, that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. New business item number one, consider approving an ordinance authorizing the issuance and delivery of $3,995,000, principal amount of general obligation bonds, Series 2012A, of the City of Gardner, Kansas, and providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on the bonds as they become due. And that would be ordinance number...
2390.
2390. Laura?
Oh, in deference to newly appointed Councilman Freeman, I can do a 30-second synopsis if you would like.
Absolutely.
Several years ago, the city approved a benefit district to do about $4 million in sewer improvements roughly out by the Celebration Park for a new housing development, which has not come to fruition. However, the sewer improvements have been built. After the sewer improvements were built and council went through a series of steps to create the assessments that go against the benefiting properties to pay for the debt, between the time that council approved that first series of assessments and the time that we could issue debt, the property owners filed a lawsuit against the city. So that's been several years now, almost three, if I count them correctly. So the simple story is we've since settled that lawsuit and council has gone through these steps to reassess benefiting properties to include the amounts that were caused from the delay. And at the, that was done in October. At the December 19th meeting, this council approved a resolution authorizing the sale of the bonds that will finance those improvements and the payments will be spread against the benefiting properties from that action October 17th. So then we had a rating call with Moody's Investor Services last week and we sold the bonds today and that's where we are. We're ready to approve, accept the sale of the bid of the bonds. And with me tonight is Tom Calico from Springstead, the city's financial advisors, and he'll talk about the rating and perhaps about the bids. And should council have any questions, the city's bond counsel, Dottie Riley, is here as well.
Thank you, Laura. Tom Calico, Springstead. Laura covered most of, I think, what's needed. I'll just add a couple of things. As Laura indicated, we did take bids today for the help of a new council member. Traditionally, for most transactions, when the city sells bonds, they basically just take bids, similar to like if you were taking bids on, you know, purchase of a dump truck, for example. You take bids and in this case, the lowest interest cost wins and we measure lowest interest cost by what's called the true interest cost, which takes into account the time value of money. We took bids at 11 o'clock today. We received four bids, one of which unfortunately, the bidder did not get its good faith deposit in, you have to put a good faith deposit down, kind of like when you buy a house, it's just assurance that you're actually going to go ahead with the transaction. They didn't get it in in a timely fashion, so that we had one that was, one that was disqualified. Left us with three bids, which is a good amount. The winner was Morgan Keegan out of Memphis at a true interest cost of 2.3337%. Based on market indices, we feel that's a fair, that's a market level rate, fair rate and reflective of the city's credit quality. Speaking of credit quality, as Laura alluded to, the bonds were rated by Moody's Investor Service. The rating was AA3, which is the city's current rating and in conjunction with this rating, Moody's affirmed the existing AA3 rating on all of the city's outstanding general obligation They noted certain strengths in the rating report. Those are increasing sales taxes. We see that the city's sales taxes have been increasing of late and that was noted by the rating service. Also, a history of strong market access. Challenges are kind of the strengths, sometimes strengths can be overdone, the dependency on sales tax, which is a more volatile revenue source, obviously, and then just the city's been having declining valuations in the last year. So those were some strengths and challenges noted by the rating agency. So the two actions you have before you this evening are first approve and ordinance, authorizing the sale and then a resolution setting the kind of terms and conditions of the bonds. Thank you.
Questions for Tom? No, okay, thank you, Tom. Uh, council, any questions for Laura or Dottie?
The rating was AA?
AA3, and that's what it was before.
I thought we were at a AA2.
That was before the big global recalibration. Apparently Moody's was, um, valuing, for lack of a better word, governments more harshly. Is that the way to say it? And when they value this like the rest of the world, we came up two steps. So it is AA3.
And this occurred?
Yeah, it was late. It was in last year's end of the year report.
Right.
So sometime last year.
All of the Johnson County cities?
Uh...
Or several, I know Lenexa was involved, I think, Overland Park. Uh, anyone that had a rating, I thought, went through the cycle. Wasn't there a change in the way Moody's?
Some of you may recall during, especially when the Dodd-Frank Act was being considered about that time, there was some criticism of the rating agencies that they were unequally rating public entities versus corporates.
Right.
And, um, so what Moody's did is they did what they called a recalibration. And in their recalibration, they essentially said, okay, we're going to start rating municipals more akin, on the same scale as corporates. Now, um, and when that happened, virtually all of, uh, the municipals, there, um, there were some exceptions, but most municipals saw their ratings come up with that recalibration.
Other questions? How would council like to proceed with ordinance 2390?
I move we approve ordinance 2390 authorizing the issuance and delivery of $3,995,000, principal amount of general obligation bonds, series 2012A, of the City of Gardner, Kansas, and providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal and interest on the bonds as they become due. Second.
Motion Morrow, second Broxton, that we approve ordinance 2390. Uh, this will be a roll call. Vote Morrow.
Yes.
Broxton.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Fotovich.
Yes.
Freeman.
Yes.
2390 passes. New business item number two is the resolution accompanying this, and that's to adopt resolution number?
1864.
1864, prescribing the form and details of and authorizing the delivery of $3,995,000, principal amount of general obligation bonds, series, excuse me, 2012A, of the City of Gardner, Kansas, previously authorized by ordinance 2390. Laura?
That's just step two to finish the transaction.
Questions? How would council like to proceed?
I move we adopt the resolution of number, number 1864, prescribing the form and detail of and authorizing the delivery of 3, 3,995,000, principal amount of general obligation bonds, series 2012A, of the City of Gardner, Kansas, previously, previously authorized by ordinance 2390. Second.
Motion Broxton, second Morrow, that we adopt resolution 1864. Broxton?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Fotovich?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
1864 passes.
Shall we pop a little champagne or anything?
Yeah, absolutely.
This is finally over?
Finally over.
Until after the council meeting.
Oh.
In another building. New business item number three, consider holding a public hearing for the purpose of receiving comments relating to a request for a waiver of distance, of the distance limitation submitted by Blazer's Restaurant to allow for the sale of cereal malt beverages within 200 feet of a church. Uh, we will have a brief introduction, uh, from, uh, from our city clerk regarding this and then we will open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The next three items on your agenda relate to an application for a cereal malt beverage license that Wally Borth, the owner of Blazer's Restaurant, has applied for. There are three steps to, um, securing this general retailer license, which will allow him to sell, uh, retail cereal malt beverage on his premises. Currently, our code states that it prohibits anyone from selling cereal malt beverage within, within a 200-foot radius of a school, library, or church. And Blazer's Restaurant is within 200 feet of the First Presbyterian Church of Gardner. Uh, city code also allows the governing body to grant a waiver of distance limitation to allow for the sale of CMB on, at its establishment. However, prior to the granting or the consideration of a waiver of distance limitation, um, code does require that we, uh, that we serve public notice and have a public hearing. So there will be three steps involved to this process. Um, item number three would be the public hearing. Item number four would be the consideration of council for the waiver of distance limitation. And item number five would be the consideration and approval of a cereal malt beverage license for Blazer's Restaurant. Um, the owner, Wally Borth, is also here this evening to answer any specific questions that you may have.
And with that, uh, the public hearing is open. Uh, if anyone wishes to speak on this item, if you would come forward, state your name and address for the record and have comments. Mr. Borth, do you wanna speak on behalf of the public hearing?
Not really, not really. Didn't want to lose questions.
Uh, Doreen, how, how, we'll have to, let's close the, the hearing. Uh, is there, is there anyone that wishes to speak? Would entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Motion Morrow, second Broxton, that we close the public hearing. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Uh, now let's move on to new business item number four and then open up for council questions, uh, regarding the waiver.
Mr. Fotovich?
Um, I was just curious, how close are the, uh, library and the school?
Melissa, can you pull up under presentations? I have a map which shows the 200-foot buffer. And Wally's Restaurant is the triangle.
Yeah.
And then the property, the 1, 3, and 13 are all church property lots. So your question was, where was the library and?
The library and the, and the, uh, school or not within that distance?
Correct.
What, what's the reason we have a waiver like this? I mean, under what circumstances would we?
You know, we've had waivers in the past. Uh, last year we had, as a matter of fact, Mr. Borth had applied for it. He was providing, um, the beverages at the balloon festival, which was at Pioneer Ridge Middle School. And he had to secure, um, a waiver of distance limitation for that because it was right next door to the school. And that came before the council. And as well as the festival on the Trails Committee, they came to the council for their events as well.
Those are temporary licenses?
Correct.
Have you had, anyone ever come before and asked for any sort of long-term license like this to?
You know, not in my tenure. I've been here about a year and a half. Um, Melissa, have you had, um, anyone?
In the, in the past, the only reason that we've had to do a waiver of distance limitation was for the festival.
For the temporary.
That I'm, that I'm aware of.
Well, and I do know, I, was BJ's Oasis?
Yes.
BJ's was grandfathered in at the time the laws were put in place.
So should one come, someone come in and wanna take over that property or move in there to put a Barrow Tavern in, they would have to go?
They'd have to go through the process.
Absolutely.
Okay.
The same process, but it would be for a liquor license.
It gives an opportunity for the councils to determine the location of the tax of permit.
Um, I, I actually did have, uh, a question on that. The, the 200-foot limit, that is a state requirement or is that a, is that a, adopted by ordinance?
You know, I believe it's adopted by ordinance.
Okay, so that is, that is a city requirement. And then, if you could, I'd, explain the difference between a cereal malt beverage and a liquor license?
A cereal malt beverage license allows you to retail 3, 3, 2 beer, whereas a liquor license would allow you to sell hard liquor and 5-0 beer. So there is a distinct difference.
And those are state restrictions?
Yes.
Is the, the 200-foot, is that, is that a long-term ordinance? Has it been in place for quite a time or is that something that, I don't know when it came on the books, I don't know exactly?
I'm not sure exactly, but it's been on the books a long time.
As long as everybody around here has been here?
Right. And I would, I'm not sure if under state law, there is some kind of provision that was put in that you could consider it at 200 feet. I'd have to do some digging, but it's a pretty common
Sure.
way of having it set up in municipal, in Kansas.
Well, Mr. Borth is a, a longtime tavern owner in, in town, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just had a couple of questions in. With the change, if you were, uh, allowed it for the CMB, would it, would it change your hours or anything?
Absolutely not.
Do you have any changes staying late or doing?
All we're trying to do is just offer an adult beverage to go along with. Like we put barbecue on the menu, we went in and cleaned the restaurant up.
Yeah.
Try to make it a staple again. And just offering just a 3-2 beer has no change of the hours. We have no intentions of changing the hours. It's 10 to 9 Monday through Saturday, closed on Sundays. And that's the way it's gonna stay.
Will it have to change, um, like the way you staff, like the, the kids that work at the counters?
Absolutely not.
I don't know what the rules are for who can serve a 3-2, if they have to be?
It's the same rules as 21.
Okay.
So you, you have to be 18 years of age to sell it or to carry it. To actually sell it, you have to be 21.
Okay.
So we, we have all that in place.
Correct. And, uh, and I, I realize I'm skipping ahead, but on new business item five, the staff recommendation is to approve this. Uh, now is, is that in conjunction with input from, uh, the police department?
Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Morrow. I did neglect to say that the police department has run their background checks and everything and they see no reason to disallow this request.
Chief? You get, and the, the police gave their approval on this and that's even considering the close proximity to the park, to the, to the library, to the swimming pool, that, that kids would have to be traveling back and forth.
There was probably more importance to us than the 200 feet, per se.
Right. I know they're, they're out of the 200 feet, but they're, I mean?
Most cities have 500 feet. It all depends upon the codes that they have developed within their own communities. Uh, we do a background investigation on every applicant and principal on every CMB license, regardless of how long they've had one. Whenever they come up for renewal, that's one of the things we do. Um, this case no different. Uh, I took into consideration our long-time experience with them, uh, in his former business. Uh, we took into consideration the park, young people, swimming pool, how likely there would be problems developed because he had 3-2 beer inside his facility and there's young people all over the place. Uh, it was, it was our view, uh, that, that because of his past behavior here for so many years and our lack of having to deal with problems, uh, and on those very few occasions we had problems, we had complete cooperation, uh, I don't see a problem to it. Now, the next person, Wally, or Mr. Borth, may sell it to somebody next month and make a million dollars. I hope he does. But the next person, we would probably be very, very critical also because we, we wanna know their experience. If necessary, we're gonna call jurisdiction they come from. Is their word good? Do they do what they say they're gonna do? Have you had young people lording around their facilities, things of that nature? And so the police department has no problem with this.
I, it brings up a question from that standpoint. If, if there is a transfer of ownership, does the new owner have to come in and, and apply for a brand-new license?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct. Yes.
Has there ever been a license at this restaurant?
No.
From anybody? Before you or?
No.
Has there ever been an application that was turned down? You can recall, Chief?
In the city?
I mean, for this particular location of other people tried to put it there and?
I don't believe anybody else has ever tried to get it, or, I've only been here 24 years, but I don't recall anybody ever asking for a permit for the Blazers.
I know talking with the Shaws, I've told them for 34 years, they had never tried.
We, we could still, I mean, even if this were, the 200-foot radius were not an issue, we could still decline the, uh, the license for other reasons. For instance, traffic or, could we not, or, I mean, in other words, is this the only thing we're deciding is whether we waive this 200-foot radius?
Well, you're deciding, there's two issues you're deciding on to, to allow, to, to provide Mr. Borth with a waiver of distance limitation, which would then allow him to have a CMB. So you, you'd be voting on two items this evening?
So we would vote to either approve or deny the waiver and then assuming it's approved, then we would vote to approve or deny the license?
Correct.
But if the, if the perimeter, you know, the, uh, distance were not a factor and he came here and said, you know, I'd like to get a cereal malt beverage license, on what basis would we as a council, uh, make that decision beyond this? Would we also look?
Pretty much, pretty much as, uh, I don't mean to step in front of you, Doreen, but pretty much on the same facts that are put forth here. Uh, if you take the 200-foot essence away, say that isn't in the code, someone comes in and asks for a license for a facility, they've got to go through the background and there's a certain amount of things that we look at there. And if they do not pass that background, then you would get a recommendation from your police department saying, "We request, uh, license not to be issued." Could be a variety of things. It could be something that occurred, uh, um, in another place. We check all the computer systems. Uh, it's not just a matter of, of what we, per se, know happens here in Gardner.
But, but traffic, you would consider traffic then as well?
DUI is one of the things that we look at, only because DUI is also one of the things that the state looks at. We work very closely with the State Liquor Control Department on all, uh, locations in the city that, that sell CMB or alcoholic beverages. So we look at those, those kinda things. Uh, if the applicants had, uh, some difficulties with being arrested for some things in the past, I think it's 18 months, that's a disqualifier. There's several things, other than just what we think.
I'm not, I'm not really concerned about his character, you know?
No, I understand.
I'm more concerned about the traffic and the likelihood that, you know, there are a lot of kids transiting that area and?
I may have, I may have misunderstood your question.
Oh, that's right. But nonetheless, I, I don't know, that's, my opinion is that it's, you know, uh, it's a, it's a heavily trafficked area with a lot of kids and minors that, you know, may not be watching and introduce the, the alcohol there. I don't know. Seems to me like it would be a recipe for disaster.
It could be, it could be. But then again, I've done alcohol control or I've had a, a liquor license for many, many years and I've never had an infraction with the state. I watch what I do and I pay attention. But if you wanna take stuff like that into consideration, there's a drive-in liquor store right across the street from the high school.
Yeah, and I was gonna ask you about that.
That's, to me, that's worse than what I'm, what I'm trying to do. All I'm trying to do is offer a legal beverage.
Except they can't drink it there. Right? I mean, I mean, well, they're not supposed to.
Can you open a beer in your car like you got?
Well, they're not supposed to drink it.
You know what I mean? Yeah, yeah.
But, but we never had that discussion on that liquor store, or, I mean, yeah, the liquor store that you're talking about, the Star Mart, is it?
Yeah.
We never, there was never a consideration within that 200-foot radius for that, was there? Because of the high school?
It wasn't.
I mean, that's farther than?
Yeah, it's farther than 200.
At that time, it wasn't the school property.
Yeah.
And they will be coming up, liquor licenses are renewed annually, so they'll be coming up, I believe, within this next six months.
Does the new property move it in to the 200-foot range?
It probably would.
The school purchased property?
If it's right there, that north, if it's in what, the northeast corner?
Where the, where the detention pond is, that?
Right.
That area, the, the school should purchase that property. So it would bring it in.
Just so you know, to make you comfortable, this is not for sitting, coming in, sitting down and drinking beer. That's not at all. That's not at all our intention whatsoever. All we're doing is just, it's not even, when Mr. Sherman came over and did the inspection, when I showed him where the cooler was going to be, it's not even going to be in sight. It's just going to be a thing to have if you choose to come in and have a Bud Light with a hamburger, you know? We're offering a couple of kinds of beer. Some people in here may have more beer in their coolers at home, refrigerators, than I'm going to have on that premises. Seriously.
Now?
So it's not, that's not what it's for, at all.
I guess comparable establishments that?
Gambinos.
We had the Gambinos?
They sold it. Or they did.
When Smokin' Babes?
Yeah, I was going to ask the chief, was there any sort of increase in incidents or anything else when Smokin' Babes was operated under similar hours with the 3-2 license?
No, sir. I don't remember any either. And then, so those are the, that's the comparable. This is not like Austin's or?
Absolutely not.
Or?
Or Wally.
Or the Rousters now?
Yeah, no.
Right, okay, or the Tumblewee.
No, we have no desire to go back there either, believe me.
Okay. What does the church say about this?
I haven't heard anything from the church.
Have you contacted them?
We aren't required to contact them according to our code. We are required to provide public notice, which was put in place into the paper and posted on city hall doors.
But not sent to them directly?
No, sir.
I was just going to ask though, since I've not been privy to any of it, did any of the council members receive any sort of emails, phone calls, or anything after the notice was posted? Anyone speaking against?
Yes.
I saw a couple of anonymous notes, but nothing?
There was a?
Yes.
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, there was an email to, to the city council from a, from a citizen saying that they didn't agree to put it in there because of what Larry and I have asked about, is the increase in foot traffic of, of children and the increased possibility of having alcohol-related incidences if we allowed liquor there. A single, just one email? That's all I, that's all I got.
There was an anonymous note that was?
There was, exactly, an anonymous note from a concerned citizen that was taped to the front door right next to my public notice. And, and I would like to let you know that on that sign, they noted that it was a liquor license application, which it wasn't. And I think we, we spoke to that a little bit earlier.
How would counsel like to proceed with regard to the waiver of the distance limitation?
I move we approve the request for waiver of distance limitation to allow Blazer Restaurant to sell cereal malt beverages within 200 feet of a church. Second.
Motion Morrow, second, Freeman, that we grant a waiver of distance limitation to allow Blazer's Restaurant to sell cereal malt beverages within 200 feet of a church. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
I recorded that as three ayes and two noes.
Correct.
Is that correct, counsel?
Yes, that's what I heard.
Okay. All right, the new business item number five is to consider approving a general retailer license, allowing the Blazers Restaurant to retail cereal malt beverages for consumption. We had talked about that. Are there any questions, additional questions specific to the license? I know we kind of talked about both items at the same time. How would counsel like to proceed with new business item number five?
I move we approve a general retail, retailer license allowing Blazers Restaurant to retail cereal malt beverages for consumption on the premises. Second.
Motion Morrow, second, Freeman, that we approve a general retailer license allowing Blazers Restaurant to sell retail cereal malt beverages for consumption on the premises. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
No.
I heard that the same.
Correct.
As a 3-2. Okay.
Good luck, Mr. Borth.
Thank you. Yes, good luck. And I liked the tabletops.
Did you like that?
Yeah, we were in Friday night before the game, and it's kind of neat, you've got all the?
And I did check with the school before I did that too, just to make sure.
Okay, great.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. New business item number six, consider authorizing the purchase of a dump truck cab and chassis from Diamond International. David?
Jody's here too, if there's? This truck was discussed at budget. 2012 budget has $110,500 in it, $95,500 for the truck, cab, and chassis, and then another $15,000 to retrofit the existing salt spreader and to outfit it with a new plow. Excuse me. The truck we, to be replaced, is number 508. It's a 1998 International, has 66,000 miles. The main issue with this truck is it was originally purchased, it's undersized. From the information that we distributed earlier to you all, it's, I think it's gross vehicle weight is 21,000. The dump trucks we typically buy are 32,000. Jody and I were discussing the engine today. It's basically a heavy pickup truck engine and not a heavy dump truck engine. So the issues with this was, it was purchased, it was the type of vehicle that would typically be used by a landscape operation. You'd have a dump bed on it for hauling probably two tons worth of material. We secured bids through the Mark Group bidding thing of, Mr. Freeman, the Mid-America Regional Council has, will remember that, they will seek bids for items, one of them is vehicles. Our policy allows us to purchase off of that type of institutionalized bidding process. So we typically for routine vehicles, we will purchase from them. The low bid for an international cab and chassis is 67,735 from Diamond International. It's roughly a 60-day turnaround from ordering. Once we get it, we would have, we're in the process, if approved, we'll be seeking bids for a dump bed and electronics and hydraulics for it. Once received, it would go to that successful low bidder for outfitting. Truck, if ordered this month, would be available to us in May. Additionally, we will be seeking bids for plow and plow controls. Received an inquiry, I'm sorry, we didn't get the information back to you all before the meeting, but we received a question from a council member on what would be the impact if we did not replace this vehicle. It would hit us in two different places. One, the most probably visible, at least in the winter, would be for snow removal. Right now, we have four dump trucks. Three of them, three of them are in the street maintenance inventory. This one, 1998, then we have a 2002 and a 2004 model. Additionally, for snow removal, we use a line maintenance dump truck. It's a 2009. We use the large trucks, deploy them on our arterials. We have roughly 60 lane miles of arterials and the collectors, we have 61 lane miles of collectors. We deploy all four of those, keep them running. Typically, our response is, once the snow stops, our goal is to have all streets, at least arterials and collectors, clear within 12 hours. If a vehicle breaks down, that time's extended. Can't guarantee that all. Even our new vehicles will not break down. However, this vehicle, being the oldest, the weakest, is the most probable truck to break down. So once again, you know, should we lose a truck, it's just going to extend that response time. Another issue we run into is in the street maintenance side. As I mentioned, street maintenance has three trucks. The line maintenance truck is theirs, it would be available to street if available, but typically they're using it for their purposes. One of our trucks has a, basically a barrel bed and a conveyor system on it. It was purchased in 2002.